Start recording. Welcome, everybody. I'll start, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM today. And we'll start with the opening remarks and moment of silent reflection. Councilman, would you recite the land acknowledgement and the safety message, please?
Certainly, I have the land acknowledgement here. Let me read this to the record, please. Um, the town of Midland recognizes that is located on land, which is traditional and treaty territory of the Chinabek people now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Bozley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre-confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of Huron Windat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of Indigenous.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And if you could, please all join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, next on the agenda is a conflict declarations, a conflict of interest. Do anybody have a conflict to show to this this evening? I see none. Oh, no, I see none. Perfect. First up on the agenda is a approval of our agenda, and it would be moved by Council Ochesky, second by Council Gordon, that the contents of the regular council agenda for September 15th, 2021 be approved as amended. Item 15.1 motion for which no motion for which notice was given, reparking along Cook Drive will be deferred to October 6 regular meeting of council. Any questions or comments with regards to this? I see none. All in favor? So Carrie, thank you very much. Next up, we have the consent agenda, and it would be moved by Councilman, second by Council McGinn, that the items and related recommendations contained within the September 15th, 2021 consent agenda as consent items have been considered by council be adopted with the exception of item 5.3.1, CIP, August 30th, December 3rd, item resolution from the township of Larder Lake, supporting the town of Cochran's motion supporting the PSA test be free and included in the national healthcare system. The second item, item 5.4.2 CSR dash 21 dash 57, the 2022 budget direction, and item 5.4.4 CSR dash 21 dash 59, pedestrian cross rock tender award, which will be considered under section 10 reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. Any questions or comments with regards to this motion? Councilman, and then I have Council Cunningham. Councilman?
Thank you. Just two items on the consent agenda. One, I believe it was drafted by Karen Mealing, the letter for the time capsule. So I just want to say thank you to Karen. That's a really fun letter that captures what a wild and wacky year it has been. Interestingly enough, she omitted the Ontario's Best Butter Chart Festival. Um, so that was the only comment that before we finalized that and submitted into uh uh, the time capsule that perhaps we we talk about the before times and how great our butter chart festival is. It was award winning that we had at one time hundreds of thousands of people show up and upwards of 200,000 butter charts sold in one day. Uh, something that we hopefully will be able to do once again. Uh, but more and more importantly, um, on the Seventh Street reconstruction, I know we're going to have lots of time to discuss that matter. Um, later, I just wanted to put the idea out there if we're going to be looking at the design of Seventh Street, just to be considerate of the entrance and the coming and going of Monday's Bay. Um, we've talked about potentially a little crosswalk near the entrance where there's the preschoolers. Uh, just hopefully some of those pedestrian traffic calm designs can be built into the uh design of the street. So that was just a general comment for staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council Cunningham, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Just on item 5.4.3, I want to thank everybody for reading and considering the Culture Alliance Orange Shirt Day statement that was drafted by the joint efforts of everyone in the Culture Alliance. That includes, of course, the townships of Tay and Tiny and the towns of Midland and Penetangoshine, as well as our Bozley First Nation. If you have not had a chance to read this through viewers, you can find that in our agenda. And the report there is fairly thorough. I think a wonderful job was done in crafting this respectful and considered statement for us to use on September 30th, which is, of course, Orange Shirt Day and a day of truth and reconciliation. I just wanted to bring that forward rather than pass over it. And thank you so much. It's on the consent agenda and going right through because there's no contention on it. Everyone has had a chance to read and approve. So thank you, council for doing this.
Thank you, Council Cunningham. Any questions or comments? Council Gordon?
I'd like to just bounce that back to Council Cunningham. I agree that was a really well written document. I think it would be a disservice to all the people that put their hearts into this to just leave it on our consent agenda for people to go and find on their own. Perhaps Council Cunningham could take whatever it is, two minutes and just read that for us. So it gets out on the record and it's a part of the permanent record.
Council Cunningham, you care to read it or I can if you'd like?
On September 30th, we certainly will have an opportunity to do a variety of events around the um, Orange Shirt Day, our statement. I would be happy to read the entire first page of the document. Let me just scroll to it now.
Just looking at the motion that came forward and it's a 5.4.3.
Yep.
A Culture Alliance Orange Shirt Day statement.
Yes, so the statement is inside of that report. It is page four of four. And so I'll read it while it is not September 30th yet. This is what we will be able to read thanks to our Culture Alliance pulling together to work on this. On this day, September 30th, Orange Shirt Day, a national day of truth and reconciliation, the Culture Alliance works to celebrate, foster, promote, and leverage the cultures of the area. Bringing together the five communities of Bozley First Nation, the towns of Midland and Penetangoshine, and the townships of Tay and Tiny, with the recognition that culture is not bound or restricted by any geographic or municipal boundaries, has resulted in a valuable, unique, collaborative, and positive partnership. Between 1830 and 1996, more than 150,000 First Nations, Métis, and Inuit children attended residential or day schools, including six-year-old Phyllis Webster, who was excited about her first day at St. Joseph's Residential School in Williams Lake, British Columbia. Her grandmother had bought her a new bright orange shirt for the special day. When she arrived at the church runs residential school, she was stripped of her clothes. Her hair was cut, and her new orange shirt was taken away, never to be seen again. As Phyllis stated, the color orange has always reminded me of that and how my feelings didn't matter, how no one cared, and how I felt I was worth nothing. Orange Shirt Day was commemorated from Phyllis's experience. On June 2nd, 2015, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission released its final report, which included 94 calls to action to redress the legacy of residential and day schools and advance the process of reconciliation. The recent discoveries of remains and unmarked graves across Canada has led to increased calls for all levels of government to address the recommendations of the TRC's calls to action. All Canadians and all levels of government have a role to play in reconciliation. The Culture Alliance recognizes and seeks to raise awareness about residential and day schools in Canada, and we ask you to join together in the spirit of reconciliation to honor the victims and experiences of Indigenous peoples. The Culture Alliance exists to build bridges and therefore does not seek to assign guilt or blame. We aim to raise awareness and make positive change. We recognize that for many, you are just learning about residential and day schools and the abuse of Indigenous children at the hands of churches and the government. We ask that we all take further steps to learn more about this history and the impact that is still felt today. We also ask that everyone takes this day to honor and remember the victims. Culture Alliance in the heart of Georgian Bay, September 2021.
Thank you so much, Council Cunningham.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? I see none. All in favor of this motion? So Carrie, thank you. Next up, we will suspend the uh motion to suspend council into the committee of the whole. Moved by Council Post and second by Council Cunningham. All those in favor? So Carrie, thank you very much. So first up on, we have the presentations of staff recognition, years of service and awards. Am I turning this over to Ms. Yorkin?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Ross and good evening Deputy Mayor, members of council and fellow employees. This evening is a great opportunity to acknowledge employees who have reached long service milestones and the recipients of our employee service awards. Midland's Employee Service Recognition Program was developed in 2018 to build on the values and the goals of the organization, allowing the organize individuals and teams to be recognized for their contributions. Notwithstanding COVID, Midland employees have continued to provide exceptional customer service to the residents of Midland, though it be in a little bit of a different format. And we have also found different ways of acknowledging our employees. This year, a little different, I've asked council to read the names of each of our recipients so that they too have part in our employee recognition program. This evening, we will recognize 16 employees who have reached significant milestones and three individuals who have been nominated as the recipients for this year's awards. Before I go too far, I do need to say a special thanks to Kim Cruisen and to Claire Pike. This week, thanks to their efforts, employees across the town have enjoyed in COVID style, true way, in their team bubbles, a lunch in appreciation for their continued service. And I say thank you, ladies, very much. In front of you and thank you Catherine, she will be our advancing the presentation this evening. And this is, I'll turn it over now to yourself Deputy Mayor Ross to start with the first award. And thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yorkin. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Terry Paquette as 30 years as chief billing officer, official, sorry, 30 years as chief billing official. Thank you very much for your long and dedicated service.
Councilor Ochesky, please.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to thank Jeff Beauchamp, the environmental compliance officer of water and wastewater operations for 20 years of service with Town Midland. Thank you very much.
Councilor Beth Prost, please.
James Reichardt, supervisor of municipal bylaw, 15 years of service. Thank you. David Trump. David Tremblay, lead hand mechanic, operations, 15 years of service. Tim Smitten, operations technician, N S S R C, 15 years of service. Andrew Berger, operations technician, N S S R C, 15 years of service. Chris Petit, fire captain, 15 years of service. Dan Chisholm, operations technician, operations, 15 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor McGinn?
It's with great pride and honor that I'd like to thank Alex Dawson, the environmental operator level one for water and wastewater operations and 10 years of service. Congratulations, Alex.
And Councilor Gordon, if you would, for five years of service.
Certainly with pleasure. Stephen Higgins, one of our transit drivers. Thank you for your five years. That's great. And Gail Ree from HR and payroll and benefits, especially thank you because you make all that payroll happen every two weeks. So I know that's so well appreciated by everybody. And Michael Dubo, first class firefighter for five years on the fire service. Thank you very much. Tom Collins, a third class firefighter, working his way up for five years on the fire service. Thank you too. And Cal Johnson, volunteer firefighter. God love the volunteers in our community. They're so critical. And five years as a volunteer is something to be very proud of. Scott Turner, first class firefighter as well, five years. Thank you for your service on the fire department. And Todd Archer, IT tech, near and dear to my heart, here for IT services, five years. Good on you. I know challenging, it can be serving in IT.
Thank you very much, councilors, and congratulations to everyone for receiving your five-year milestones. Your certificates will be delivered to your respective departments. And now we have an opportunity, we have, as per the recognition policy, there are three awards that we announced each year. Um, this year, we're going to add one particular new award. So Catherine, if you would start that next presentation, please. And I will call upon Deputy Mayor Ross, please, to start with our first award, which is for exemplary years of service.
The pleasure to uh award Ms. Margaret Murray for her accepted very years of service. Thank you, Ms. Murray, for all your dedication to the town of Midland. Much appreciated. Congratulations.
And Councilor Cunningham, if you would, for the customer service award, which is recognizing an employee. Sorry Catherine, if you could go back one, recognizing a group that not only deliver, but celebrate excellence in customer service at the town of Midland. Next slide.
It is a true privilege to award this award to Natalie Murdock. Natalie came through for us when our planning department was going through some very, very tough times. And I don't know if anybody noticed because the excellent customer service she provided during this time was amazing. Thank you so much, Natalie. You are so well deserving of this award. And we appreciate your service to the town of Midland and all of our citizens that were able to count on you during this time.
Thank you. And Councilor Maine will present the Trailblazer Award, which recognizes an employee or in this case, a group of employees who have adopted change and blazed the trail in 2021 to implement a program or service that has improved either customer service, efficiency and or integrity of data and information. Councilor Maine, if you would?
Yes, and it is of course not about physically blazing trails, but anyways, uh, we want to say thank you so much uh, to the human resources uh team for the implementation of ADP, um, HR time and attendance payroll modules. A huge shout out to Claire Pike and Shannon Tompkins and Kerr for all their hard work on this. And uh, the payroll, if you aren't familiar, the payroll process has been streamlined, opportunity for payroll errors has been significantly reduced. So we just want to say thank you again to Claire and Shannon so much for the hard work, determination for the team. It was amazing. Thank you.
And thank you, councilors, for making this year a very memorable opportunity, even though we're not able to get together as a we call it a family. Um, to celebrate this year's milestones, we have found a way in which to make it memorable, and we greatly appreciate your participation. Thank you to all of the recipients and congratulations to our nominees for this year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yorkin. And yes, congratulations to everybody. That was a great and uh it truly is, uh, shows us dedication here in the town of Midland. So thank you so much. Next up, we have a presentation from Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, and this is a geotar, GeoPark update. Uh, we have a consultant coming in and with your permission of council, I would uh normally we allow 10 minutes, but I would allow our consultant. I think this is a great uh opportunity here, some great news and if it's approval with the council, we give them up to 30 minutes. Is that fine? I'm seeing a dot ahead. Thank you so much. So it was great. Uh, so we hear, we have the presentation from Brand Trade. Who do we have? I apologize. I don't have the list in front of me.
So Deputy Mayor Ross.
Oh, hello, Mr. Cunningham. How are you, sir? I'll introduce the uh, the speakers, please.
I am going to introduce this and then turn it over to Brand Trade tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham.
About a year ago, Middleby Landing Development Corporation presented a council with a significant opportunity to stimulate economic development for the whole North Simcoe region by seeking a designation as UNESCO Global GeoPark. Council unanimously supported conducting a feasibility on the prospects of achieving that designation. In a few moments, you'll hear a presentation from Brand Trade who undertook the feasibility study. In summary, the feasibility study answered a basic question of the feasibility of achieving GeoPark designation. Absolutely yes. And the primary benefit of the UNESCO GeoPark designation for the whole of North Simcoe is that it will brand and market the whole region to visitors and investors alike. And in turn, will drive economic benefits for each of the municipalities and the whole region. After hearing that, Middlebay Landing Board unanimously endorsed the feasibility study and its recommendations at its August meeting. And we wanted to present this major opportunity to Midland Council as soon as we could, and that's why we're here tonight. With that introduction, let's hear from Tony Piggott, a co-founder of Brand Trade, and his presentation, followed by hopefully a fulsome discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Tony Piggott. Tony, you're on.
There we go. Uh, yes, thank you, Bill. And Deputy Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Councilors, a pleasure to meet you all. Sorry, this isn't in person. It is a very exciting opportunity that I've got the privilege of sharing with you. I'd like to take 10 or 15 minutes max to go over the essential learnings from this study and then have some Q and A if we've got some time for it. And this slideshow is available, of course, but there's also the actual report, which I assume you've got a copy of, and it provides much more detail than you'll be getting from me tonight. I'm going to go over the highlights. So with that in mind, um, let's see. Am I able to move this screen? There we go. Before I get to the agenda, I want to share a top line on two really interesting GeoParks, UNESCO Global GeoParks. The first is in the south of England in an area around Devon. And it is branded the UNESCO Global GeoPark of the English Riviera. Uh, one interesting aspect of this is that it encompasses better part of 15 kilometers and three towns, and has been used very effectively to really create cohesion and connectivity across that area in order to, as Bill said, really raise awareness, the marketing and engagement, and above all, collaboration. Uh, the next thank you, is a relatively new UNESCO GeoPark called the Cliffs of Fundy. And and it, not unlike the English Riviera, is quite an extensive area covering more than 140 kilometers of shore, uh, three towns, several villages, four parks. So heretofore, a fairly fragmented area. But this UNESCO GeoPark framework has allowed them to really create an effective skeleton or framework to pull things together and to really amplify existing activities there as well as generate new opportunities. So I'd just like to keep a couple of these two in mind as we go through the opportunity for North Simcoe and indeed all of Georgian Bay. Next slide, please. So I'm going to touch on uh the the opportunity in North Simcoe and why it will achieve designation. Um, look at the potential benefits. Uh, we have, of course, taken a look at community support within the region. Touch on timeframes, costs and funding. There are three particular opportunities that should be part of the way forward, and then talk about governance and next steps. So, uh, next slide, please. The first thing I'd like to touch on is the actual nature of UNESCO GeoParks. They are unified geological areas with global significance. And there are now 160 plus such parks around the world in more than 45 countries. In order to get a designation, you actually have to operate as a GeoPark for a year. And UNESCO then comes and assesses the degree of readiness against a scorecard of about 101 different criteria. There is an organization in Canada called the Canadian Global GeoPark Network. And it's been formed to help Canadian regions that want to step forward and become GeoParks. Um, in Canada currently, there are five operating GeoParks. You can see the red dots across the way, including the Cliffs of Fundy that I just mentioned. Now UNESCO has created a designation called aspiring GeoParks for those regions who have come forward and demonstrated to them that they really do have a story to tell that will get over the bar that UNESCO poses for their designation as a GeoPark. Currently, there are seven of them, and Brand Trade approached the Canadian GeoParks Network in order to become an aspiring GeoPark for Georgian Bay. I'll explain that in a minute. And uh, the fabulous news is that from their point of view, it's a very prompt response. Now, we have partnered with Dr. Nick Isles of U of T, who's regarded as the foremost expert on the geology of the Great Lakes and of Georgian Bay, uh, and has produced a number of excellent books, including one called Georgian Bay, if you haven't seen it, that essentially covers both the geology, the history and the culture. Um, and it was our proposal to them that convinced the Canadian GeoParks Network that Georgian Bay and the participating regions could indeed be one of the most significant UNESCO GeoParks in the world, which was very encouraging. And of course, by accepting us, we then had access to a lot of resources, um, seminars, individuals within these GeoParks and around the world that could help us understand what it would take to become a GeoPark and open the door to the uh, down downstream, to all of the activities that are going to be required. So it was extremely useful to get this done and incredibly encouraging to sense the excitement that they have for this part of the world. So if you go to the next slide, I'd like to talk specifically about North Simcoe. Now, first of all, Georgian Bay itself, as you are fully aware, is an extraordinary place in so many ways. But when it comes to geology, Professor Isles would uh would be a much more articulate uh, arguer for this, but essentially the extraordinariness of it, geologically speaking, is that it represents two very significant geological developments. Obviously, the Canadian Shield and the Precambrian Rock of the eastern side of Georgian Bay and the Paleozoic and fossil-rich sedimentary areas that are evident um, on the peninsula, but also here in North Simcoe. It's the fact that there are, um, there are elements of the Georgian Bay writ large here in North Simcoe that allows uh this area to pass the test, as it were, as a microcosm of Georgian Bay. Uh, the photographs that I've got there are from different parts of Tiny, Tay, Bozley First Nation, and so on that are illustrative of the diversity of the region and indeed how it reflects all of Georgian Bay. So um, a gold star, as it were, for the the region as far as Canadian GeoParks Network would be concerned. But the most, the equally important thing is that, um, as Professor Isles would say, geology is about a lot more than rocks. And that in many respects, geology becomes destiny. So the fact that they, they being UNESCO, look for history, culture, and community. and community as critical factors in evaluating an area places North Simcoe in a very, very strong position. So if you go to the next slide, I know I'm preaching to the converted here about the assets that are in the region, but the foundation that exists is really twofold. One, an extraordinary history, going back, of course, some twelve thousand years, if you look at all of Georgian Bay, to the pre-contact and significant history of this part of the bay and the assets that are currently in place across the region that are there to build on and in fact be enhanced by UNESCO Global Geopark and all of the ideas and initiatives that it can bring to the party. So it's these two things, the microcosm of the diversity of the geological significance of Georgian Bay and the fact that the cultural and historical stories are so interwoven and so driven by that geological history that makes this such a compelling geopark candidate. If you go to the next slide, please. So with that in mind, the question that we then asked ourselves was to see what evidence there is of economic impact from these UNESCO geoparks. There are dozens, literally, of studies looking at the impact that UNESCO geoparks have or geoparks writ large on the communities within which they operate. So I won't go through chapter and verse. They are referenced in detail in the study, but a few critical things. First of all, it is a system that tends to lift all boats. The areas, whether that's in the UK where they've got quite an extensive study or some multi-country studies, the impact is essentially felt within all of the existing operations and assets that these communities have, obviously with tourism, with the nature of festivals, educational programs can expand as well as conservation activities. It's a real driver for new research, the creation of workshops, and significantly, geo products have become quite a successful byproduct of UNESCO geopark in a number of areas. But in addition, multi-country studies have shown that, on average, geoparks would generate eighteen-part or full-time jobs. Now, I have to say with that in mind that there are small geoparks and there are bigger ones, and there is also quite a range in what people make of them, because it is very much about how much energy and drive you put into it that you get a payoff. So another demonstration of the impact, if you go to the next slide, is a multi-country, oh, sorry, is an example of one site. And this gets to the point I just made about how much you can actually generate from a geopark. This happens to be in Ireland. You may have heard of this place, the Giant's Causeway. They have, the community has worked very hard in creating infrastructure around it, deal with touristisms and the like, and they generate over three and a half million dollars of employment in that region. That is one site. So this underscores an important fact, and that is UNESCO geopark is going, the results of an UNESCO geopark are going to be very much driven by the energy, innovation and drive that the community can bring to it. Next slide, please. There was a study as well that took a look at thirty different geoparks, including a number in Canada, and asked the community whether they felt any benefits were accruing from a geopark in their neck of the woods. Over ninety percent of them confirmed that it created new revenue, that it was an economic driver. Again, these local products in a lot of places have been found success, and then although it isn't a direct economic benefit issue, there was strong acknowledgement that a UNESCO geopark worked effectively at creating a platform for engagement with indigenous communities, which I'd like to expand on a bit, if you can go to the next slide. So the benefits, which I've concentrated most of the commentary here on the economic benefits, do go into a number of other things, but Brand Trade, as well as Bill and the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, engaged with different leaders within, leading organizations within the community, as well as the municipalities, to tell them more about what geoparks are all about, what the potential benefits were, so that we could go back to them as things unfold and really engage in something more substantial. As far as the four municipalities go, Bill and Brand Trade presented a top line on what the possibilities were, and if I were to summarize, I would say that there was a great deal of interest in the possibilities that a geopark represented for each of the communities, but it was early days, people needed more information, and there was a general concern about, pardon me, about the cost that this might impose upon them. I would also say that we took a look at everyone's strategic plans and found great synergies there as well, given the nature and the values-driven idea of a geopark. We spoke, we met with the Maytee Council, the Cultural Alliance, of course, and the Historical Parks, as well as the Georgian Bay Biosphere. Again, there was a real interest here. Certainly, the parks, the managing director of the parks has had experience with UNESCO and certainly could see the advantages that this could bring in animating or bringing news and new energy, in a sense, to St. Marie Among the Hurons and so on. As far as the Georgian Bay Biosphere goes, we really wanted to see them to ensure that there wasn't any kind of friction. UNESCO looks for evidence that there is alignment and synergies, and we had a tremendous response from them. They are very curious to see where this can go and how our activities can really come together, particularly in the areas of marketing. I would say, too, that we didn't formally meet with Bosley First Nation. It, pardon me, it wasn't possible. We did have an informal briefing to people in their office, and it was a very positive response that we had from them. And with that in mind, I'd like to just go to the next slide to talk a bit about indigenous communities. The United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People is actually a UNESCO initiative. So it's no surprise that UNESCO places a tremendous amount of importance on indigenous collaboration in developing a geopark and acquiring UNESCO designation. And what they emphasize is early involvement and true partnership. So in fact, they've even got a very extensive how-to guide for this, and we also have the advantages of being connected with other geoparks who have board members and people participating from indigenous communities. So this will be a very vital next step to go deeper to ensure that the connection with Bosley First Nation and other communities, obviously with the Maytee Council as well, is really central to the way this unfolds. Next slide, please. So I'd like to now talk about the costs of this and the kinds of timeframes that we would be looking at. With the feasibility study done, jumping ahead a bit here, but we believe that within a couple of years, an operating geopark is possible. Through the Canadian Geopark Network, we were able to survey a number, in fact, we requested financial information from a number of parks within Canada, and they were kind enough to share with us the costs for both development and operations. It was, for reasons of their own, they wanted it to be blind and they wanted it to be simplified financial information, although we have a sense of what their their operating plans would include. But long story short, to go from zero or feasibility to an operating geopark, the development phase has cost a handful of these parks within Canada somewhere between a hundred and fifty-three thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not including the value of volunteer time. When it comes to operating the geopark, the range, as you can see there, is very significant. And that's probably, we think, a test, somehow, an illustration of the scale of some of these parks. You have, you know, single-site parks and you have something as big as, for example, an aspiring geopark in Whistler, the Sea to Sky Highway. So that's the cost range. Those tell you that there's, it really depends on the particulars of the geopark that you're trying to create. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of funding, again, this network has been helpful. We've learned a lot in terms of best practice, and they've emphasized that in many instances, funding at this stage where monies are needed in order to get to work on the development phase of it, to get to the opening of the geopark, is done without municipal funding. In the case of Whistler, which is the Sea to Sky Highway region, quite an extensive area, they have raised eighty percent of their funds from provincial and federal sources. I'm actually going out there in about ten days to meet with the head of it and find out more about what possible insights that can be gleaned for future fundraising. Other sources from the network have ranged from different foundations, Geological Foundation, the Trillium and so on, as well as importantly, the private sector and high net worth donors. So I think the important point to leave with you here is that in this next phase, municipal governments are not expected to contribute financially. The opportunity to engage is further down as this gets closer to an operating geopark where there will be, I think, a much stronger incentive to get behind something that is about to go and to invest where it makes sense, potentially, as has been the case in some other places. Next slide, please. So with those monies in mind and the opportunity here of North Simcoe being the gateway and the base camp of the UNESCO Georgian Bay Geopark, I'd like to talk about three specific things that should factor into the actual final plans, which will come about over the next couple of years. The first is the use of technology. I suppose these days that's an obvious, but the opportunities are really significant. The Cliffs of Fundy have done a pretty good job using their apps and GPS to really help people as they are there. But there are opportunities over and above that where the website itself, which would be for North Simcoe, but also for all of Georgian Bay, can leverage these advanced technologies that are available through groups like the University of Toronto, where high-resolution photography called LiDAR can be used to create almost virtual reality experiences of those sites. So that wherever you are in the world or in Canada and whatever time of year, there is the opportunity to create the experience of the geopark for students, for prospective tourists, for people who are interested in this part of the world. There is also the wonderful ability to borrow other proven technologies like the audio systems that are used in museums and art galleries so effectively, so that when you are going on to a site, you can hear about the particulars of that place, the history, the geological story, the indigenous story and so on. So they're marvelous, marvelous opportunities to animate and bring this to life, to deepen the educational potential, the tourist experience and so on. Next slide, please. A second and related one is that there was an opportunity that came up to develop what we call site modules. And if you imagine that there would be in North Simcoe thirty or forty sites that would comprise in the earliest days the UNESCO geopark for this region and another hundred across Georgian Bay eventually, the development of the content, the photography, the narrative, the weaving together of history with science and so on, and the indigenous stories all have to be put together, which are basically the pillars or the foundations of the geopark. So one of the great pieces of news that's come out in this process is that we've gotten a head start on that. Through U of T, there is a postdoctoral opportunity that we have applied for for a person to spend the next two years, starting in January, developing these modules. There are already, this, these modules are already in development through a prior program, so we even have a bit of a head start there. We've gone to the Midland Cultural Center and they've agreed to partner on this opportunity, and one of the next steps will be to basically find the matching funds that the government, the federal government have put together to fund this person. So that's a great way of getting a head start or a really fast start with the exciting content that can come from this geopark initiative. The last point, if you go to the next slide, please, is that when you step back from this, when you see the global significance of this initiative around geoparks, how it has multi-facets from advanced research to culture to collaboration and engagement on so many levels that it really begs for, and this is through the thinking with, again, Nick Isles, that this is a fantastic opportunity to create a Georgian Bay Geopark Institute. And there is no better place to have that institute than in North Simcoe. There, and such a place would be a magnet not only for research that can advance the interests of Georgian Bay from an ecological and conservation point of view, but also the stories of the culture and history that weave into it and opportunities, in my view, that can drive initiatives around reconciliation. The educational opportunities would emerge there, and of course, it could be a tourist center. This is a particular science center that is based in Fundy, as an example, but there are various ways of going about this, and we think that it's an exciting opportunity that really needs to be on the top of the agenda as this moves forward. Next slide, please. So the particulars about how to move forward begin with what's happened over the last six months. What we've had in the feasibility study is the gathering of a number of key stakeholders connecting with experts, creating a network within the community across Georgian Bay within Canada and globally, and also starting to talk to potential funders. The best practice that has been cited by UNESCO and the studies through the Canadian Geopark Network is that the best way forward at this stage to get the development going and to move toward the opening of that first-year geopark is to do so through a steering group. And that that steering group should be composed of people with expertise in geoparks, as well as, of course, people that are locally engaged and citizen advocates and experts in this region. There would be terms of reference that the Canadian Geopark Network could vet, and that the steering group would drive this next phase, finding, funding, and then overseeing the planning to get us to that year-one geopark. And the other best practice in many instances is that that steering group of citizens, experts and so on should, at this stage, be independent but connected with municipalities, key stakeholders and funders. The point being that it should be relatively small and basically driven by this idea of getting it off the ground within a reasonable period of time. It's been the experience in a number of places in Canada. Our next slide, please. Our next slide, please. So what happens at this point with a steering group in place would be that the the process would move toward the creation prior to the opening of a year one geopark and possibly quite early in the process of an entity, a legal operating entity, and in all likelihood, a not-for-profit entity. There are three other options that the Geopark Network shows, including private sector, but based on our analysis of that, it seems the best fit would be for a not-for-profit organization to be set up. It, of course, would have a board of directors. It would be guided by the strategic and management plans that would be developed and it would require paid and volunteer staff to be assembled. So this, this not-for-profit entity, let's call it georgianbajopark.org would be in place prior to the opening of the geopark. The question would be how early that might happen. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of specifics on the next steps, there are short-term funding, the steering group would drive toward where that funding, the funding that would be required would be to complete a comprehensive vision strategy and case for support for major funding. It would fund the other half of the salary requirements for that postdoc fellow for module development and there would be some funding there to help sort out the structure and governance plan. Next slide, please. And so with major funding in place, the, and possibly the not-for-profit set up by then, launch and management plans would be developed, be able to get into much more concrete site and technology development, staffing, the institute honestly should be a separate work plan. And then with an opening of year one, an application to UNESCO goes through. So we believe that that process will be eighteen to twenty-four months. So, next slide, please. In summary, and I'm sorry I've gone a little longer than my fifteen, I just want to emphasize what I'm sure is in everybody's heart that this part of the world, North Simcoe and Georgian Bay, it's genuinely a Canadian jewel and it has global significance as a region within the context of UNESCO and geopark. And this is an opportunity not only to create a framework for development, tourism, so on, but to really establish the area with the kind of reputation that will help in terms of the type of development that happens in terms of sustainability and values-driven. It will do a tremendous job in enhancing and adding to your regional positioning. You've done really interesting work with the Cultural Alliance. That's something to build on. The marketing and development platform that Bill referenced is something that can really create connectivity and join the dots in the region. The six months has created really strong momentum and a lot of buy-in. And there are important opportunities to pursue as we get to that geopark year one launch around the three things that I've mentioned, including the institute. So I want to thank you for this opportunity. That's the most important thing. It has been a very exciting thing to work on for the past six months. And I think that the possibilities here are really exceptional. Thank you very much. I'd love to hear your comments and questions.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. And what a great presentation and the future truly is bright. I loved it. It was fantastic. I can't appreciate it enough. I want to remind council that this has to do with the geopark. I don't want to get into a conversation about Midland Bay Landing. This was presented to us from the Midland Bay Landing, but it truly is about the geopark. So do we have any questions or comments with regards to this presentation tonight? I have councillor Post and I'll go to councillor Gordon and if anybody else, please, has a question, hold up your card and I'll write you down. Thank you. Councillor Post?
Thank you for your presentation. This is very exciting. I'm looking forward to it, but I'm a little skeptical still because we do all this work to put an application in. I'm just wondering if you have knowledge of applications being denied. Like, is that something that, I mean, obviously it's something that can happen, but does it happen often? Do you think we're really in a position where we're going to be accepted?
No, thanks. Thanks for that. And it's, it's an important thing to note. We have heard of one place that had designation and had it removed. And that was because there was blatant disregard for any of the principles. As far as those groups that have applied and been denied, I can find out that for you in terms of both here and in other markets. But I will say this, that the people running the Canadian Geopark Network have shown us that the hundred and one areas of qualification or benchmarks that are, you are evaluated against are looked at from UNESCO's point of view to see whether there's progress being made in these things. It's not such an airtight system. So if they, if you are on your way in terms of an educational program or on your way when it comes to taking a look at new sites or different marketing branding things, you do not have to be complete in order to get that designation. You have to demonstrate that you're organized for it and that you're on the right path.
Thank you.
Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. It's almost impossible to talk about this without Midland Bay Landing, but I'll try. So this is really good. I mean, I like the presentation and I was excited when I heard this potential. And I had zero problem with, you know, you guys doing the exploration on this or quite frankly, getting to where we are right now. But in my perspective, we've now hit, we've allowed scope creep, huge, with Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, because this is not what we set you up for at all. This is not what we finance you for. You were supposed to develop the plan that is for Midland Bay Landing. So why is, I mean, I appreciate this presentation. It is very educational. I did review it before tonight's meeting. I look at some of the numbers that we're talking about are staggering sums potentially and there's no guarantees, like there's nothing, no guarantees, anything. But why isn't this being pitched to the county? This, to me, seems like a county-led initiative at minimum and not down in the weeds of the municipalities. We would be the beneficiaries and certainly we'd have a voice at the table if we were close to being accepted or were accepted. But this is a North Simcoe initiative and really should be between the province and the county. And I think we're in over our heads. We're shopping Ferraris here when, you know, all we can afford is an F-150. So are you doing this to the county? And you're just kind of giving us some information? Or do you really expect us to continue to fund this entire adventure through Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation instead of its only reason for existing, which is to develop that plan we gave them?
If I may, I'm sure Bill has-
Mr. Curtinhead, care to answer?
I would be happy to answer. At this point in time, we brought this to council and to the whole region because we thought this was a great opportunity for the whole region. As Brand Trade has now mentioned, the idea is now to turn this over to the steering group to carry on. Midland Bay Landing is going to step aside. We introduced it and we do not want to continue with it. We want the steering group to continue with it while we continue with the mandate for Midland Bay Landing. We will be a beneficiary, we hope. But we are now going to pass over the torch to the steering committee to allow them to carry this forward. And as Brand Trade has said, the funding for this is principally coming from federal and provincial sources and a lot of private sector funding. So, and obviously the county would be one of those additional funders. But history has shown that most of the funding is coming from the feds and the province. So there's little money required right now, none, as Brand Trade has said, from the municipalities. So I'll pass that back to Tony to carry on.
Curtinhead. Councillor Gordon, do you have a follow-up?
Maybe I missed this, but who and who's this committee and how are they funded? That we're going to pass it back over to now?
I suggest that Tony best answer that.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. The Canadian Geopark Network best practice indicates that a steering group, which emerges often from, through the feasibility study, because it starts to create the network and expertise, that the steering group emerge out of that. So what we are proposing, I touched on it in the presentation, was that the group that has come up, including ourselves, in this process should be the core of this steering group. And we've got Professor Nick Isles, for example, myself, Cam Bromman, these are, and the group itself should be consistent with those criteria that we mentioned. Experts on geoparks know the local areas, use, essentially get vetted by the CGN in terms of our plan and mandate. And it would be us that would go out, create a funding strategy and plan, raise money in this first stage, but do this in liaison with the key stakeholders across the region. So we're not looking for money from the township of the town of Midland, but we are wanting to be in touch, understand what you need, we will keep you posted and that we plan to do across the region.
So I guess the next step is to to get the other communities to buy in and and if we can't or if they're not interested, I'd be surprised they weren't, can Midland or maybe a couple of communities do it on their own? Or if it really truly is to be a success, we need all, everybody involved?
Well, what we want is enthusiasm and a green light from everybody so that at certain times in the process we engage or reconnect in order to find the best and most effective way forward, including the eventual opening of the geopark. So we're not looking for financing from any of the communities now, but in time, there will be a way to launch this geopark in a given town or township that will pay dividends. And at that point, we would welcome the discussion around how that could be best done in collaboration with the townships.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dino, you had a comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And if I could add to, you know, some of the explanations around councillor Gordon's question, and certainly from my perspective, when this idea came from Midland Bay Landing Development Corp, I thought this was a good idea. Having gone through the results of what Brand Trade has done, I think this is a great idea. And I say that for a couple of reasons. We considered, you know, this, this request from the Development Corporation because we were talking about the communication around Midland Bay Landing. We felt people weren't appreciating I think the thoughtful design that went into that approach. You know, we felt it was done in harmony with, certainly in nature, it provided great public realm. It was respectful of the culture and the history of the community, but that didn't seem to be resonating with some of the community. We talked about the Jew because some of us are familiar with geoparks and UNESCO and we said, we've got a very unique asset here that I think is underappreciated by people outside of the area. I think this would be a good idea to reinforce the unique aspect of what we have and to draw attention to how we're doing this in a very responsible, respectful way. So the fact that this, and I've heard them say that this could be one of the most significant UNESCO geoparks in the world. We all know we have beautiful assets in this area. What this reaffirms is they're unique. This is a unique area. This is a very exclusive club that we're being invited to join and this is going to be done outside of the municipality. So we got a grant to engage these experts to look at this. This is now going outside of the municipality. Okay, so the costs are going to be borne outside of the municipality. When they want to engage with us, we'll have a decision to make if we want to participate. If that means coming into Midland Bay Landing and having a research facility or whatever it might be, but they will come to us and we'll get to make that decision. But if North Simcoe, you know, and the Georgian Bay area appreciates what this can do as it has done for other geoparks, I think, I think you'll solve some of the problems that we have with sustainability as a region, but also how we continue to embrace such a beautiful, unique asset and continue to share it with people who want to, you know, respect it in the same manner that we do. So I think it's, for me, this is a home run and I couldn't be more supportive of what this report says.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. I have councillor Maine and then councillor Cunningham. If any other councillors have a question or a comment, please hold up your card and I'll write you down. But councillor Maine?
Oh, thank you so much. This is a great presentation. This is really moving from this theoretical concept into something that's really materializing into something really exciting opportunity. I love, I love the idea. I mean, we have so many parks, provincial, federal, there's even a bunch of conservation reserves in the area. I guess, well, first of all, you're talking about indigenous consultation. The town of Midland has developed protocols with some of our partners. Posley First Nation obviously is who we speak to the most. They're our closest neighbor. But perhaps reaching out to the Wendat Nation, we usually reach out to them for official plan. I don't know if this would trigger that, but we love hearing from the Wendat Nation in Quebec City. They're always great to talk to. Not even nearby, of course, Wata, Mohawk, depending on how far we're traveling outwards. And that goes to the question of the concept of the geopark of Georgian Bay, if Midland, I don't want to say claiming, but we were initiating the Georgian Bay Geopark. Georgian Bay is quite large and it goes over Collingwood, Perry Sound, Owen Sound, Kalarney, Mantoulin Island. How did those municipalities, would they be able to come into play or collaborate or partner with this opportunity?
That is going to be part of the planning process. I really appreciate that question because in time other areas of Georgian Bay will engage. But North Simcoe has the opportunity to be the first mover and to be the, I won't say dominant, but the gateway to the UNESCO Geopark and the place that people go to first, being adjacent as you are to four million people, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the, one of the things that we've been contemplating, and I didn't get into when we talked about technology, is that there is a way to accelerate the representation of other parts of Georgian Bay almost right out of the gate by using technology, by having modules that are out of the limestones or the sheer rock on the other side of Perry Sound on the highway, for goodness sake. Manitoulin has the great stretches of the escarpment. And of course, the Bruce Peninsula itself is fantastic. So with the expertise we have, we can identify twenty significant geopark micro sites that can be represented online. Communities can, I think, step up when they see this, shall we say, representation of those places and find the initiative to engage and build around it. So it is going to be a bit of a bottom-up process, councillor.
Thanks for that. And yeah, I've been saying that somebody needs to take a 3D camera and go on a canoe ride through Y Marsh and share that with the world. Like, it's just amazing. I love taking my kids there. Just a follow-up then, one thing that stood out to me, which I think would be incredibly and amazing, other places waterfront communities like Hamilton has a little discovery center right beside the HMS Haida. So the tourist center idea, I think everyone can understand it's a building that seems to be pretty easy to do. Anyone can build buildings. It's the institute that I think would maybe be a challenge. Establishing an institute from scratch, would we have to partner with, would it be partnering with universities, colleges, other existing organizations? You mentioned it was the Biosphere Organization out of Perry Sound. Can you talk about that at this point about that, what would go into establishing an institute?
Sure. Sure. Um, first of all, the, you would partner with the university. And in this instance, honestly, the, the, Canada's greatest expert is in our corner. And institutes in U of T are a, an established framework. So we've already started to look at how you could possibly structure that as well as aligning with UNESCO who has its own institutes. So in terms of the, the, the actual mandate and the approach, there's a lot of experience already in our camp to understand what that would require. But I'll say one other thing. It's possible to get this off the ground in a virtual sense in short order. The building or whatever will house this can follow. But the fact is, most of this stuff can be represented and collaborations and so on can happen in an institute through a, a web platform. And that's one of the exciting things that we were really getting, we were seeing the possibilities of so that you don't have to wait for four years to see something transpire. And there are examples of that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Cunningham, question, comment?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And thank you gentlemen for bringing this to us. I do think I speak as well alongside with the rest of council saying it's great to see the work that has been done thus far. Um, I love the idea of looking at this development framed in heritage, both natural and cultural heritage, and appreciate the level of expertise that we are able to tap into and are choosing to tap into. The one small question I have that has come up from constituents is, is the Midland Bay Landing Board's role done? So can they, I guess, the question has been get back to work on the development itself at Midland Bay Landing. Have they done the role? At this point, the steering committee would be made up of other experts and pulling in those community citizens then, so that the board's time on this and members' time on this is complete.
Mr. Colonel Hand?
So to follow up, as I said to Counselor Gordon, I'll say again, Counselor Cunningham, that it is our intention now to pass the torch to the steering committee to carry on with the expertise they've already got. And that we've brought it to you and we now believe that it is time to pass it over to the steering committee and we concentrate on the development. I hope that answers your question.
And we will have a motion coming for, forward after a conversation that states just that, Counselor Cunningham. Uh, sorry, Mr. Dino, you had a comment?
Yeah, if I could just add to what Mr. Kurnahan said, I just want to make it clear that the Midland Bay Landing Development Corp hasn't stopped working on Midland Bay Landing Development Corp work. Um, you know, I can see Mr. McIntyre on the call as well, who's part of, part of that board. And I can tell you, in conjunction with what's been going on with Brand Trade in this study, they've been working on, and you can see part, you can see it down in the demonstration area. I mean, there's, there's work going on there today. They did a pour today. So, you know, there's lots going on from a communication and, and demonstration platform, but we're also looking at what's necessary to continue the development of that site.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments regarding this item? Well, I want to thank you all for coming this evening. Mr. Piggott, that was fantastic presentation, much appreciated. Mr. Colonel Hand, always a pleasure. Mr. McIntyre, thank you very much for showing up this evening. And we'll have a motion that we'll put on the floor. Counselor Maine, I understand you have it to read.
Yeah, I have a motion here coming out of the presentation.
Wonderful, please.
Uh, that move by myself, that I'll need a seconder, I guess. I'm not sharing, so pardon me.
Once, once we get on the floor, we will get a seconder.
All right. Thank you. Um, the motion reads that council endorses the UNESCO Global GeoPark Feasibility Study and its recommendations, and that council supports Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation's resolution of their August 26, 2021 meeting outlining that a steering group, independent of the municipality, consisting of Tony Piggott, Cam Bromin, and Professor Nick Isles, commits work immediately on the development and launch of a GeoPark in the Georgian Bay Area. And that this concludes in the Bay Landing Development Corporation's involvement in this study.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments with regards to Counselor Gordon?
Are there any stipends associated with this committee or is this a voluntary benevolent effort?
Mr. Dino? Not sure how that, or Mr. Piggott?
Yes, it is, there are no stipends. Should, should funds come up down the road and particular work has to be done, that may change things a bit, but we're volunteers at this point.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. And if I could, I just, I don't want to come across like a cheapskate here. I just really, I'm trying to understand the scope of this and, you know, what, what the one on the hook for. Cause I think it'd be wholly unfair for us to string along this committee in any way, shape or form, if we're not willing to pony up later on when the, you know, the budget really comes to us.
Nope. Thank you. I apologize. I need a seconder for that motion. I did not ask for that. I see Counselor McGinn. Thank you very much. Now, one thing I will add is, uh, when I first got on council, I received this wonderful book, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And I had the opportunity of pulling it out last week and I wanted to reread it. And one of the things, they have quite a few that really fall into this, but one of the things that hit the mind, I took time to read the chapter was reject everything new. And I'm not here to kill our community. This is a huge opportunity. It's something very new to, uh, North Simcoe and the Town of Midland. And I want to support this wholeheartedly. So thank you so much for your, your presentation this evening. Any other questions or comments?
You're here, you're here.
Counselor Cunningham, I'll give you the last word and we'll call the vote.
I just want to thank you for being so clear and being very patient as we make sure that we understand everything inside out. Um, I truly appreciate that.
Thank you so much. All right. All those in favor in this motion? So carried, perfect. Thank you so much. And thank you this, for coming this evening. Appreciate everyone's attendance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Exciting times ahead for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All the best. All right. Next up, we have no public hearings and we have reports withdrawn from the consent agenda. First up is a report pulled by Counselor McGinn. Counselor McGinn, would you like to read the motion or would you like me to?
Okay, let me try and change screen.
Oh, want me to? I got it. No problem.
If you have it right in front of you, yes.
I do. All right.
Oh, thank you.
Withdrawn from consent agenda, um, that council of the corporation of the Town of Midland support the Town of Cochrane's motion requesting that the federal and provincial government move to have the PSA test for men included in the national healthcare system and that it be made available at no charge. I moved by Counselor McGinn. I need a seconder to get this on the floor. Move second by, uh, Counsel Ocheski, uh, Counselor McGinn, you care to have a question, comment, or I think it's self-explanatory and I believe the vote, if we can take?
I would love, I would love to vote. I want to be, I want to be very clear because there are some people who don't understand that it is a prostate screening that I am talking about. Um, and I think, I think everybody here for considering it. And I'm very grateful that there are other communities and councils who have written this letter. Um, men, your health matters. Oh, my word, Bill.
Counselor McGinn, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? I see none. All those, oh, Counsel Ocheski, I apologize.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to second what Counselor McGinn was saying. I'm turning thirty-five next year, so I'm at that point where they encourage that you get all the diagnostic tests done. And I've been in some poking and prodding sessions in the last little while. And I just encourage everybody my age to get your blood and urine analysis. It's amazing to see the diagnostics they can do these days to tell you your kidney health, your heart health, everything. And all you have to do is just take a blood sample and a urine sample and you get your whole diagnostic and can kind of shape how you eat, shape how you exercise and focus on your health moving forward past the age of thirty-five. It's easier the earlier you start. So, uh, I just encourage everybody to get out there and take care of yourself. Uh, I'm trying to do so myself. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other, Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, sure. I'll just follow up on that, that there's, you know, nothing enjoyable about that awkward moment where you're on your side looking at the wall and you're trying either not and talk to your doctor or talk about the Jays game or something. Well, you know, the fickle finger of fate does its thing, but you know what? You gotta do it, guys. Um, it's so, so easy to remedy. It's so early detectable and it's completely survivable. And I know it's normally exit only, but you gotta make an exception once every couple of years as you get older, okay? So hit the doc up. They're not enjoying it any more than you are.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll call the vote. Uh, thank you so much. All those in favor? All, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor McGinn, for bringing that forward.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we have the report, uh, staff report CSR dash twenty-one fifty-seven. It is a two thousand twenty-two budget direction dated September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one be received. And number one, that the two thousand twenty-two budget development schedule identified in attachment one be used to develop the two thousand twenty-two budget. Number two, that the staff prepare a draft ten-year capital plan consisting of a one-year budget and nine-year forecast. Three, that recommendations resulting in a significant chart change in service levels or changes in staff complement be presented to council as a service level change request. Four, that staff prepare a draft two thousand and twenty-two budget for all tax-supported services consisting of a one-year budget and three-year forecast with a maximum rate increase before uh, county impact align, aligned with July two thousand twenty-one annual inflation rate of Ontario as a starting point for the draft two thousand and twenty-two staff-funded operation, operating budget. I apologize, sorry. Number five, that staff prepare a draft two thousand twenty-two budget for water and wastewater user rate-supported service consisting of one-year budget and three-year forecast that reflects net increases in line with the long-term rate forecast of five percent for water and four percent for wastewater. I need a mover in a second to get this on the floor. Moved by Counselor McGinn, second by Counselor Cunningham, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Jeremy for a quick summary, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Ross and members of council. I will give you a quick overview of what you've got in front of you here. Uh, first up, what you're looking at is of course the two thousand twenty-two budget directions report from council. The schedule that is outlined in appendix A to this report anticipates a target budget approval date near the end of January, two thousand twenty-two. In order to achieve that, what we're looking at is delivering the budget binder package to council in early December. You may recall the, the large binder that you received last year with all of the information at the department level as well as financial summaries and what have you. We would also be seeing a public, a public meeting in January. Our agency boards and commissions doing their presentations in January and the debate being scheduled for the, for the end of January. So that's the overview of the schedule. Some of the major elements of the directions that we have here, there's a recommendation for five percent and four percent increases to the water and wastewater rates respectively. Uh, that direction is in line with the financial plan that was approved by council some years ago. And that financial plan is where it was demonstrated that those rate increases over a number of years would be required to sustain our, our safe drinking water system. The property tax component of it is a little bit different this year. The purpose of this direction is to establish essentially our, our goalposts for, for staff to develop a draft budget. The important thing that I need to emphasize here is that this is not council approving a, a tax rate increase. This is merely for staff to use as some guidelines for preparing that draft budget, which council will ultimately be reviewing, debating, making amendments to as they see fit and ultimately seeking to approve for the end of January. Little bit of background on some of the rationale for some of the specifics here. Uh, the direction does reference a maximum rate increase before the county impact based on CPI for Ontario. That benchmark was selected as it is a commonly referenced benchmark that the public is familiar with and it tends to be well-understood. Uh, it was also, uh, it also is intended to recognize that the town is not insulated from the effects of inflation. Uh, some of the examples that you'll see through the report, uh, the indices indicated that there's roughly a thirty percent increase in, in fuel costs year over year, eighteen percent increase in energy costs. And then within the, the town's negotiated contracts themselves, uh, we're looking at about a one point seven five percent increase for cost of living adjustments in relation to some of our collective agreements. Uh, the town does have pressures that extend beyond inflation-related changes. Some of those examples that you will see in the report are newly adopted legislation that's going to require increased inspections, cleaning and licensing for our stormwater management system. Uh, that is certain to come at additional workload and additional costs to go along with it. And you'll also see that it's important that we get back on track with our plans to bolster the town's reserves that are used to, to fund our capital plan, uh, which is where we get our, our funding for, or primarily get our funding for infrastructure projects such as roads, pipes, sidewalks, facilities, all that sort of thing. Last thing I'll note on this is that the draft up, that draft limit is before the county impact. The intention here is to focus on the town's controllable costs. However, as, as many of you will know, the blended tax rate increase, which considers the town's portion, the county portion and the education portion, portion will still be reported to council as it has always been. Um, as that is the, the common practice for municipalities. So it's important that that, that number also be disclosed as we go through the process. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jeremy. Any questions or comments with regards to the? I'll start with Counselor Maine. I'll go to Counselor Cunningham. I'll go to Counselor Gordon. And if any others have a question or comment, please hold up their card. I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. CEO. Did you have any comments to share before we move forward to some questions?
No, I think our CFO covered everything, so I appreciate you asking.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So Counselor Maine, and then I'll go to Counselor Cunningham.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, for putting together guidance guideline. I think this is going to be a really difficult time trying to, uh, follow all the different financial trends, which were going this way and that way. I mean, we all thought we were going to be out of the pandemic this time last year and obviously it's still more to go. Uh, so this year going into the budget, we're learning a lot more about the needs of our community through the pandemic. So I was just going to make a comment that that maybe should be reflective in on our budget. Uh, I know, uh, so perhaps a suggestion about more low-cost strategic initiatives. Um, we obviously know we have to do infrastructure stuff, but I know there's a huge interest in getting our parks, uh, improvement to parks and public realm stuff. So I just wanted to kind of make a comment about, uh, making sure that, uh, some of the strategic priorities that have probably even been strengthened priorities through the pandemic, just to make sure that those are considered in the, um, uh, budget. I know infrastructure costs usually take up a lion's share of our budget. Uh, and the critical infrastructure, that's so important. I just wanted to make that comment about the two thousand twenty-two budget. Thank you.
Mr. Jeremy, anything to add?
Thank you, Counselor Maine. I guess one thing that I will add, through the budget process, staff will also be sending a form to members of council and heads of, uh, chairs of committees. Uh, that form is intended to provide counselors and, uh, chairs of committees with the opportunity to, essentially propose any, any changes that they, they would like to see, whether it be additional funding or even service reductions that they would like to be looked at, uh, new initiatives, that sort of thing. So if upon receiving that form, you have some ideas that you would like to, to have added to the, to the, the, the assessment that's being done here, uh, by all means, please complete the form, uh, send it back to, to staff and we'll ensure that it is part of the consideration. That's of course, if you have, if you've got something that you feel is over and above what, uh, what we'd already be considering in the budget.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jeremy, for presenting this overview and getting us started nice and early on this process. I really appreciate this and I understand the huge amount of work that's going into this. Uh, must be incredibly challenging as well with the fluctuations we're seeing from the pandemic. I mean, we looked at building costs that the two-by-fours just went from twelve dollars down to three dollars again. Uh, I was curious about the increase in fuel year-on-year, whether that's an accurate thing to look at versus over the course of three years because we saw fuel prices plummet before they grew again. So how that is? So how that is taken into things? Um one of my biggest questions, though, uh two questions really. I appreciate that we're not approving a tax increase or the tax levy at this point in time, but what I do find is what we aim for is typically what as a council we hold to. So if we're aiming for a tax increase of three point five percent as the starting point with this budget, that's what we're telling our town to work on. That's what we're telling our staff to come back with. So they are going to put these huge amount of efforts in to bring us a three point five percent increase. We've seen how easy it is to hammer that down. Because I don't know, I'm not staff. I don't know the in depth budget of it. So if we are not interested in a three point five percent increase as the goal, I personally am not interested in that. I I would like to see us aim for a starting point of two percent maximum increase this time. Um then that's something we need to consider today because we'll look back during budget deliberations and say, well, we asked for three point five percent and they gave it to us. So that's something to consider. The other thing I wondered about uh MPAC. We're working off our two thousand sixteen assessment for taxes. Because of the pandemic, again, we've got that complication of our two thousand twenty one tax rate was based on the same two thousand sixteen. We know that our new assessments are rolling out. Don't see anything from MPAC personally, but again, I'm not deep inside of MPAC's world to say, when do those increases start? When do they start graduating those in? Because those increased assessments are also going to see an increase in our budget. So those two pieces, the one I put toward council, do we want to say aim for three point five percent and toward Mr. Jeremy, if you have any insight on MPAC's process, when does that assessment bump up? Is it going to be for next year?
Mr. Jeremy, care to comment?
Certainly. Uh thank you, Councilor Cunningham. There's, I think I've got the list here of the the items that you're concerned about. So I'll try to run through them as best I can. Uh the first point you raised about the uh volatility of of prices on specific commodities such as fuel and what have you. Um you raise a good point. How sticky is this inflation number that we've been seeing? Um as of August, the most current number for for Canada is up to four point one percent. I actually haven't been able to access uh Stats Canada to get any additional details on that today, but um looking at historical trending is something that we certainly do, looking back over the last three to five years, depending upon the the nature of uh the the thing that is that we're looking to budget for. So yes, the point is taken that um inflation, if you just look at it in one place in isolation, may be problematic. The next item is uh the tax rate increase that we had talked about for the essentially our upset limit for the draft budget. We were referring only in this case to the the town of Midland component. There's still the education component and the county of Simcoe component, which would be layered on top of that to arrive at our blended rate. Ultimately, we do end up talking about the blend. That's the thing that that lands on people's tax bills. So we won't really know what that's going to be until those numbers start to come yet. Historically, what we have tended to see is we get a bit of a benefit from the the education component because it's tended to stay static over the years. And we've tended to see a bit of a benefit from the county, uh because our portion of the county's levy tends to um tends to be affected by the large amounts of growth that we see in the southern portions of the of the county as opposed to the northern portions. So it's a, that number that we come up with at the end is a is a bit tougher to to pin down, certainly. So when we talk about this three point five percent, we're only talking about the town's portion. I'm not certain that that actually is going to address your concern, but it's it's some additional information. The last one you'd asked about is MPAC and that our assessments are currently based on the two thousand sixteen assessment year, and that continues to be the case. In our conversations with MPAC, at last check, the they are still waiting on the province to give them direction on when they're to do a a new reassessment. Uh that direction hasn't been given as of yet. So yes, we are still using two thousand sixteen values. That being said, MPAC still is doing their work on picking up uh growth related uh assessment changes. So if a a new house were to be built, a new business were to be, were to come online, uh building permits to be issued. MPAC is picking those up. So we are seeing a degree of assessment growth that will will help the uh the town with its uh with its twenty twenty two budget pressures. Uh but when that reassessment does kick in, it's going to result in changes across the board to to assessed values. Uh typically, that becomes a four year phase in for any increases where decreases are effective immediately essentially.
You have a follow up, Councilor Cunningham?
Yes, there are actually a couple of reduction service concepts that I have. But again, I wouldn't know what value could be recouped. So prior to the end of October deadline, how do I, will I just reach out through you, Mr. Dino, or through you, Mr. Jeremy, to reflect on what those might be and what impact that might have on the budget?
I believe there's uh some type of questionnaire coming out that we'll be able to fill out. Is that correct, Mr. Jeremy?
That's correct. There's a, there's a form that will be sent out. And uh certainly encourage you to to use that. That will be great documentation for us to to use as a basis for for investigating that.
Councilor Gordon?
Thanks. I've got a few questions. One, one quick one for miss or Mr. Dino. It's more of a statement. You'll 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 know where this came from. Uh we could save some money by turning the lights off at Tiffin Park at night and uh along the the walk pack path between Manly and Lookout.
I think it's, I think it's during the day.
Yeah, they're on all day and all night. Anyway, um no, my question is more seriously here, but just a quick one, actually, before I get to the meat of it. The MPAC, is MPAC uh going to be impacted at all by, you know, the overpriced homes that people bought during COVID, you know, like that four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar house someone paid seven fifty four uh during this whole real estate madness? Is that going to impact things when it comes to uh tax rate or MPAC or anything like that? Or these are just people that are left holding the bag when the market corrects?
Mr. Jeremy, how does uh the price of houses reflect with regards to our budget?
I will take a run at this. Uh probably be better if somebody from MPAC were answering the question because I'm likely going to get it wrong, but um when MPAC does their assessment, they're looking at current value assessments. So they are looking at comparable properties. They are looking at market trends. It's not necessarily the price you paid for that specific house. That's that's not going to be your 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 assessment on that home. They have a formulas and methodologies that they use to to come up with those numbers. Uh but certainly, I would expect that with the fairly global um uptick in our in in value of residential real estate across across the board, that you will see the assessed values of homes um coming up. Uh now, when it comes to what that means for your individual taxes, we have to, we have to consider that if everybody's assessment goes up, then it may not result in you actually paying any more taxes because everybody's assessment has gone up. If it's only your assessment that goes up, then you'll end up with a bigger piece of that tax levy pie. And yes, your your uh tax, property taxes on your specific property would increase.
All right, thanks. I'm just curious about that. Oh, still my my real comments on this. I mean, first of all, this is a good report. Um it's kind of sobering to read, and I would encourage anybody interested in, you know, what the budget's going to look like before we even see the draft, should read this because these are the marching orders. Service realignment, in my opinion, uh it speaks to it in here and not necessarily service reductions is something we should be striving for. So you know, it's service cuts. It's always one of those threats. Well, you don't want to raise the taxes. We're going to cut services, you know. I think that's probably an alarmist way of looking at things and service realignment and and I believe Mr. Dino has already talked to us about this, where user fees come into play more. Uh we can't just declare everything the municipality does is for the greater good, like, you know, transit clearly, greater good, library, greater good. But you know, parking downtown, you're going to pay if you park your car there. Why should my mom who doesn't drive anymore pay for you to park your car downtown? So these kind of user fees and the concept of user fees, although they initially elicited a bit of a guttural reaction. I think that is our our part of our ticket out of this uh kind of financial hole we find ourselves in with our depleted reserves is that we start to strategically charge residents and non-residents for the things they use and don't charge them for things they don't use. Much like we do with water and electricity. So those uh non-greater good services, that's something I'm going to be looking for uh coming to, you know, and some of them may be suggestions that are just like the, you know, the, I think the the merit said this last time around, he was looking for the seventy fifth percentile and he realized the medicine would kill the patient and that that thing died. And I suspect we're going to get some of these shocking truths come to us too, but I would like you guys to really think outside the box. I hate that saying, but I don't know what else to use right now. And come to us with creative ways that we can keep the services going strategically, have people pay for the things that it makes sense for user pays to align with. And uh we can, that way we can get more bang for our tax buck without raising the taxes. We really enjoyed, you know, despite, I don't think we did enough last tax time, but that's, you know, under water under the bridge now, but the county got it, you know, they did zero percent. That helped us in the blended rate, made us look better than, you know, we could have. The other thing that's going to be really important for me that I didn't see on here, echoing Councilor Maine, is that outdoor rec with in with COVID, that's not going anywhere for the next few years. We're going to have iterations of it and linger, I'm sure, more we resist here. Outdoor rec is going to be pivotal and the fact that um if you saw the press release today, you saw the new playground structures are going strategically in a couple of our parks, but we have a bunch more to do and there's nothing cheap about those at all. So I I respect that the staff had a tough decision to make on how to spread it around and rather than rather than putting a couple of lame apparatus at all the parks, they went to town on a a few of the parks and for that I commend them. But we're not done and I want the community to know that we're going to fix all these parks and get them back up to snuff. That's going to cost money. We also approved a splash pad two years ago that for valid reasons we parked. That's going to cost money too. I'm still working on um getting commitment for some funding to help offset the capital, but I'd love to see that as part of our park apparatus. Whether we have to go into one of the the reserves like was planned before or we find other ways. Outdoor rec to me is going to be super important in this budget. Not trumping critical infrastructure clearly, but that I just can't overstate that enough and I'm not going to fill in a form with new ideas for dreaming up new door rec stuff. It's all stuff we've approved and things we need to do. I need to see that on the twenty two bu- twenty twenty two budget and let's just get it done. And my last little piece, I know that's more of a statement than a question, Mr. Jeremy, sorry. Uh is have we spent or have we banked uh that safe restart money we got for COVID from the government?
Mr. Jeremy?
Uh Councilor Gordon through Deputy Mayor Ross. The safe restart funds that we've received under the transit streams and the general streams have have been applied to the um shortfalls essentially, the COVID related impacts that we saw through two thousand twenty one. So when we say banked, it's uh we have deployed them to make up for the budget shortfalls that would otherwise exist as a result of um not generating any revenue from our rec center and um seeing drastic reductions in our our transit revenues uh all the while still running the the bus system as that's what we we have elected to do. So they have been deployed. They will continue to be deployed to the extent that they're they're made available to us and that we are able to uh meet the stipulations for using those funds to make up for COVID related expenditures. I should also mention things like the incremental costs for items like PPE and some minor you know, capitals, items like shields and and what have you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Jeremy. Councilman Maine?
Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to comment on the MPAC question, just elaborate on that. I was just re- reading that the uh two thousand twenty one assessment, pardon me, the two thousand twenty assessment was postponed by the province of Ontario. They do a five year cycle and this year was supposed to be the update of that. So we're still basically off the two thousand sixteen rates. So uh from our MPAC knowledge, the the next update will then uh will will be impacted by the next up update.
Thank you for that information, Councilman Maine. Greatly appreciated. Mr. Dino, I see you have your mic off?
Yeah, thank you, uh Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to answer a few of those questions that were were addressed. One on the trails, Councilor Gordon. I actually, um I did receive somebody reached out to me about the lights on the trail. And I forgot to talk to Dylan, but I was down there today and I saw the lights and I called Dylan and he's going to call the contractor. So you know, Dylan's on top of that. Um as for um some of the the impacts, and these are, these are great questions and I I'm really anxious to go through the budget process uh with this council again. Um because we've been through it once with with our our new CFO, I think you're you're anticipating what you're going to see. Um I'm um I'm excited about the level of data that we're we're being able to gather. Uh because I think we're all going to make better decisions as a result of that. I think what you're going to see though is you're going to see some familiar themes and and you know, you've alluded to some of them. Um you know, we're we're going to place an emphasis certainly on trying to relieve the burden on our tax, on our tax level. We're trying very hard to do that. But we have to build a sustainable future for this town. I'm I'm quite confident we're doing that. We're taking a look at the assets that we have as a municipality and what do we do with those assets? Because those can help us. You know, and we started that process with council, so we're going to continue to do that. We're looking at user pay models, you know, as as Councilor Gordon. You know, I think that's an important aspect that every municipality is looking at, and I think it's an important one that we have to continue to look at. Have we got the right uh systems for for the people that are using those services? And we need to to consider that. If they want those services or if they want a certain level of service, you know, the that cause should potentially be borne by them. So we're going to look at those types of services. We're going to advocate for Midland, you know, in terms of the government funding that we get. Uh you know, we went to AMO and we made some presentations to do uh to a few ministries on our situation and we've all seen that through the budget process to make sure they're aware of it. The potential impacts of MPAC, again, the only reason we're receiving um uh funding from OMPF, the main source of funding to municipalities today, the only reason we received it today and the only reason we have received it for the last twelve years is because our assessment value is so low relative the Ontario average. If our assessment value, because people like places like Midland more, if our assessment value starts to close in on that Ontario average, that one portion of OMPF that we get will start to go away as well. So over over that ten year period, as we demonstrated, we haven't built up, you know, these war chests of of money that other municipalities have. That's not to say the the calculation is right, the calculation is done right. But is the calculation an appropriate one for this day and age? That's a discussion we have to take to the government. And that's a discussion, you know, that we're we're anxious to do, but it's not going to solve our problem immediately. But it does explain some of our financial situation today. So that is things, you know, we're we're certainly working on. I think we've got good information. We're going to have to make some decisions. We'll have to deal with our ABCs because they're going to come forward with their needs. We're going to give you an opportunity as council and committees to to, you know, make some recommendations on what you feel should be done. And and we're going to do that in a process that hopefully will complete ahead of schedule from what we did last year. So I just wanted to add that context uh to what was expressed.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. Any other questions or comments? I see none. All those in favor of this motion? One, two, three, four. All uh Carrie, thank you so much. Next up, we have a uh pedestrian crosswalk tender award that staff report CSR dash twenty one fifty nine dated September fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. Pedestrian crosswalk tender award be received and that tender number RFT OPS two thousand twenty one dash twenty three, the amount of seventy eight thousand six hundred twenty dollars be awarded to CSL CSL Group Limited for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk at Young Street and Sixth Street. And two, the crossings at William Street and Denala Street and Bayshore Drive and Midland Avenue be deleted from the tender. Need a mover and a seconder to get this on the floor? Moved by Councilman Maine, second by Councilor Gordon, thank you. Uh any questions or comments with regards to Councilman Maine?
Uh thank you so much. I just wanted to pull this because we don't ever often get to talk about pedestrian crosswalks. So I thought this was a great opportunity to try to figure out how we can pay for these because they're critical transportation infrastructures. Our uh transportation master plan really highlight hi- highlighted that there's there was about twelve that they identified that would be really well received crosswalks. Uh speaking to a parent at Mondays Bay who lives on Sixth Street, I told her that we were thinking of Six and Young and she was ecstatic. This is great. And so I just would love for us to check the numbers off the list. I just would love for us to check the numbers off the list as fast as we can, two, three, four. And go down through the the ten, twelve that we have on the list. So that was the question to staff is. You know, how can we install these critical crosswalk infrastructure, transportation infrastructure? Um safely, uh cost effectively. Um so we're looking at the PDX out with the big arms that you see in Warminster or Hillsdale. Which for Young Street, it was perfectly appropriate. I think that's going to work great. Uh is there another locations on William Street that might uh be considered for number two? We're talking about William Street and Denalda. Uh on the list is also uh William Street and Elizabeth. Uh I've suggested that perhaps that might be considered to be the number two crosswalk location. Cause of proximity to the school and that's the reason why the number one location. Proximity to a school Monday's Bay. So I just wanted to open the the dialogue with staff just so we can talk about it openly. Uh because I'm very excited about getting crosswalks. Uh the cost of them is cost prohibitive. So maybe do we look at the lower standards of pedestrian crosswalks at some of the secondary locations? Uh so anyways, I uh it's exciting topic and you know, but one crosswalk is going to be well appreciated. But hopefully we can get to the other ones on the list too. So thank you.
Mr. Campbell, care to comment, sir?
Uh through uh Deputy Ross to councillor main. Yeah, this is a real challenge. The the master plan, uh transportation master plan in total at fifty eight million dollars worth of improvements we could do on our road network in town. We can't afford fifty eight million uh over the next twenty years or we can, but. There's hard choices to make for our our citizens if that's what they wish. These crosswalks, uh councillor may mentioned two of uh locations that are in the area here. And those are the new standards that Minister of Transportation has has put forward. They have LED lights, you you push the button, LED lights come on and you are required by law to stop for those lights. Uh versus the courtesy crossings that we have. In town here, which the motorist is not required to stop at the crossing. As is with uh other crossings in in town. So. If we're going to get to the new provincial standard for safety for for pedestrians, staff looked at. Uh the first three uh that uh be uh William Street and Denalda, Young Street and Six and Bay Shore and Midland. As the first three out of those twelve to do. The budget was around thirty thousand for each of those and that budget was based on. Uh what some other municipalities in Ontario had been paying uh going back, you know, a few years when the master plan was done. We went to tender for three. Uh council had approved, you know, roughly a hundred thousand dollars this year for for the work. And uh, you know, the um budget came in at seventy eight thousand for one. So we don't have money to do all three. So staff are recommending we choose the one near uh Monday's Bay School. The, you know, Young Street is a a bit, one of our busiest streets in town. It is a. Yeah, although soft four lanes, it's a four lane width uh for the kids to cross with the uh bicycle lanes in the middle lane. So that is our recommendation. As far as the next uh. Intersections that that we do, crossings that we do, those will be part of the budget process. And uh, you know, uh staff and council will have to see how much money we have to afford this along with. Uh new playground equipment and other things that council uh knows we have aside from just fixing our roads and. Uh new transit buses and everything else. So right now staff are recommending one, it's in front of Monday's Bay School. Uh we also around Monday's Bay have a new uh school walkability program. Now there's some signage up, uh trying to get more kids. Walking to school and not with uh the parents dropping them off. We do know dropping uh all the parents in the traffic. We not only have noise and uh road traffic congestion, we also have air pollution uh hits during those uh. You know, half hour spurts at the start of school and the end of school around Monday's Bay. They actually as part of the the health department did some testing. Uh uh before COVID on on that issue around the school. So uh we want more kids to walk to school. We want to make it safe. The costs are way higher than we thought. So if we make the decision today, we'll we'll put this one in and we'll budget accordingly. And uh it's going to take a a bit of time to get to twelve. In installations unless uh. You know, when council sees a budget, they wish to uh put a bunch more dollars against it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Follow up councillor main?
Yeah, actually, uh it's all by general business announcement. I was so ecstatic to see those on the move signs go up around town. Uh and so huge uh credit to Mr. Campbell, who's been participating with the health unit on their active school travel planning initiative. Which uh which kind of went uh. Uh into a coma there uh with COVID and uh so it's great to see that's materialized and been finalized. Um I guess, I guess the answer, I know the answer is no, but I guess there isn't a transportation reserve, a robust. Transportation reserve that we can draw into for the next ones.
Uh you'll see later in the the agenda or on the agenda today was, you know, uh. Uh a project where all of a sudden we have a uh severely deterred water main or sorry sewer main. That needs to be be fixed and advanced in our capital program. That's about a two million dollar project. And just to start the engineering is why we're asking councils to to uh approve that project tonight. But in that, we had to defer to other projects to be able to fund that project. And uh I'll be honest, uh you know. I could spend two million dollar or a million dollars on all our crosswalks or. Fix fixing the broken pipes and I'll make the recommendation to fix a broken pipes first.
And a final comment, if I may, um. Uh yeah, it's hard to pin transportation against infrastructure. That's a hard job of but hard job, hard job of prioritizing. Infrastructure funds. I just want to make a quick comment about uh developing the culture of pedestrianization and respecting and yielding to pedestrians. For whatever reason, we don't yield to pedestrians and it's becoming a huge concern in our community. Um if you travel other places in Canada, uh yielding to pedestrians and ensuring uh pedestrians have right of way and are given the priority. Uh is commonplace. I was in Whitehorse, you walk up to the street, you put up your hand up, all the cars stop. Even in Alberta, I was in Lethbridge for a family wedding. Everyone's drive around huge lifted trucks. Uh there's not too many sidewalks, it's all suburban areas, but you walk into an intersection and people yield. Uh so I just, it's a part of a general cultural. I don't know, advocacy, uh awareness, education, outreach type of initiative. I really have to promote walkability and also just. A driver safety because pedestrians are referred to as vulnerable road users. And age friendliness means trying to make a community that's walkable for young kids and seniors. So. It all ties together and it's really on, the onus is on us, the parents and the drivers to just be safe out there for kids. So. Thank you for all your initiative and I guess we'll have to settle for one crosswalk at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor main. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. I hate to burst councillor mains bubble, but I own four cars. I don't drive them all at once. Kids have them, but I have lots of cars. I like my cars and so do a lot of people in this world. Uh and a lot of residents in Midland. So uh walkability is great, but let's not forget the reality. To get back to reality again for a second. So I was also one of those parents that dropped off my kids at Monday's Bay and picked them up. Uh when I was home, if it wasn't me, it was the wife. On one of those two cars. So uh I know the congestion that happens there and I I do think if there's alternatives that will. Make some peace with the neighborhood for sure. And certainly with the poor folks at the Chinese restaurant because all kinds of ignorant thoughts used to go in there and park in his spots and. Lip him off and just it was, it was terrible. I saw that a few times. It was never me, of course, but um anyway, long story short here is I thought. Mr. Campbell, and I don't want to wade into something that we should be talking about in camera, but I'm sure you've talked about this publicly. I thought that one of the catalysts for uh putting a crosswalk on William Street was a certain litigation. And that that was identified as like a super hotspot. And I know. You know, there was also some concerns that it's a truck route and a hill and it could be, you know, problematic to try and get trucks to stop for a, you know. Blinking lights in the winter time, but all, so I'm just a little confused. I don't. I don't disagree that, you know, putting one over by Monday's Bay isn't needed because that too is a truck road and a very busy road. But I thought William Street was a priority for us and I, without wading into the weeds, am I incorrect in that assertion?
That that is why it was in the original uh budget proposal to do both. Uh when we only have of at this point, uh recommendation to do one because of budget. School kids uh. You know, and and young school kids trying to cross the street and maybe if we're asking them to walk more, might be walking. Just with the siblings and not parents, so we'd have younger children. The crossing on William Street, they're trying in general to get over to Tiffin Park. Uh, you know, again, that's not uh year round with snow banks, they typically, you know, there's not as much traffic. To the park in the winter time. Yes, we do have a legal uh court case against us about some issues on. On pedestrian in incidents on on William. Um, you know, if. We'd love to do them all, uh but right now staff are making the recommendation to look after the school kids first. Uh on uh Monday's Bay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Do you have follow up councillor Gordon?
No, no, that's, I mean, who can argue, who can argue putting kids first?
Final word councillor main?
Just a quick question. Do we have an idea of what the twenty twenty two budget might look like? Are we budgeting for one, two, maybe three?
We'll soon find out, won't we? It's gonna be a big discussion. You don't need to answer that, Mr. Campbell, but you can if you'd like.
I'll 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 leave it to the surprise in a few weeks for you because uh and also we're not done uh putting together our our complete budget yet. And Mr. Jeremy uh has to read us the riot act with how much money we really have to spend because uh. Our capital budget will spend every nickel the town has.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh all those in favor of this motion? One, two, three, four, five. So Carrie, thank you so much. Next up, we have COVID update from Mr. Dino, Mr. Dino.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Ross. With your indulgence, uh if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to call on Andy to just make a a brief announcement.
Uh through Mr. Chair, yeah. You 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 likely saw an announcement last week, Sean Bariel is uh decide to uh leave the town of Midland and move over to. Work for the uh township of Tay. Uh Sean started with us uh thirty one years ago on on Friday. Uh is is when his thirty first anniversary is. Sean uh started here as a engineering technologist right out of school. He worked his way uh into uh looking after the engineering stuff and then going into operations, director of operations. Looked after parks, water, wastewater, transit, everything outside uh of of town hall Sean's been involved in over his his career here. And you're really pleased as the community is as to the the work he's done and how he helped develop this town into what it is today. And I just uh would like to, you know, uh along with council, wish Sean the best in his uh new endeavors. He will be. Uh his last day will be Wednesday next week. Uh and uh he'll be starting the following week at Township of Tay.
Luck, Mr. Barry. Well said. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for your service, Sean. That's uh you're a fixture. You're like Midland.
Yeah, thank you. Uh thank you. I appreciate you saying those words, Andy, and again, um. Uh we don't often get to celebrate um. Some uh great contributions through through town staff, so I I certainly thank council for. Allowing us to use some of your time to do that tonight. I know you you've asked to participate more in recognition of staff and I thought that was a great creative way to do it. And certainly when we talk about COVID, you know, Sean and the team at the NSSRC are are front and center. In terms of helping out on the on the vaccination front, so. Uh certainly as long as I've been here, I want to thank Sean for for all the help he's provided to me personally and certainly to our town. So. Thank you for uh allowing us to to express that gratitude. Uh in terms of COVID, um as of September fifteenth, today is fifteenth, I believe, right? Uh two hundred and fifty active cases in Simcoe Muskoka, thirteen people are in the hospital. Uh there were thirty new cases today. Uh there was only eighteen on Tuesday, I believe, so bit of a bump in terms of the new cases we saw today. About eighty three percent of the twelve plus population has received first dose. Uh seventy seven percent of the twelve plus population has received two doses. So that's kind of where we stand in terms of Simcoe, in terms of Midland, year to date in September, five cases. Uh we're seeing in September, all of last month and August, we had four cases. The month prior to that, we had three. The month prior to that, we had two. Uh the month prior to that, we had seven and in April, we had thirty two. So you can see this roller coaster, you know, that we're certainly riding here. Uh so that's where we stand in terms of kind of the vaccination uh policy and what's going on. The health unit, as you know, is. Is taking a married, much more targeted approach. They're doing the pop up clinics. We've seen them in Penetangishing and. And Midland, they're doing online chats with uh various, um you know, stakeholder groups like students and. Uh and parents to to understand if there's any vaccine hesitancy. They're trying to make it more. Uh uh appealing for people in terms of um. You know, proximity to get vaccinations. So they're doing the pop up clinics, as I mentioned, so all those things are trying to target to get uh to as many people as possible. Who uh want to take advantage of that. So that's certainly the focus. The big um change coming will be on September twenty second, as we know, when the um. The access to certain businesses and settings will require vaccination proof. Um so there are many businesses and certainly some of our facilities that are going to have to adjust to that. Um it's going to take a little while for the province to develop their digital platform, which will. Hope hopefully help us all in dealing with that. That process and hopefully this process won't be too long. But I think we should all expect that this is going to be cumbersome in the beginning. I think for businesses and certainly for the town. Um people, we're all trying to do our best that I know. I know some people may want to make a statement in going through the process. Uh I'd certainly hope they do that to the side and allow people who want access facilities to be able to do that. But it's just going to take time to get accustomed to what we need to do. So certainly beg for people's tolerance, certainly for our staff and for all the businesses that are just trying to do their best. We don't get to make what the regulations are, we just have to abide by them and that's what we'll be trying to do on September twenty second. So our our team, as I mentioned, Sean and Dave. Who are who run the NSSRC, they're are working with our staff to make sure they feel safe, what the protocols are going to have in place. How can we make sure that we're making those people who are exempt from uh having any proof to get them to. To be able to allow to to use the facility, but also make sure that we're doing what we're required to do for those people who who uh required. To present that proof. So that's uh kind of at the top of uh certainly our planning. If there's any changes or anything specific information we want to provide, we'll certainly do that through the news. Release through our channels and uh try and get that information of people, but they should obviously, if you're going to be using the rec center. Please come prepared to provide the evidence. And certainly from everything I've seen at that rec center, people who do use it are very respectful. Very respectful of everything we've asked of them. They want to use those uh facilities, so. Uh you know, they certainly have been uh very good to work with when we talk about all those organizations that use this, so. Uh I'm not expecting any major issues there. Terms of uh what we're doing as well at the town, we're looking at uh that, um you know, the policies and procedures that we need to put in place. Um very active in doing that and and looking at what we what we need to do. We want to be thoughtful in terms of what we do. I think we all know that we're we're a small municipality and we don't want. We need everybody in place to help us manage, you know, what we do on a day to day basis and manage through COVID. So we want to make sure that we're being really thoughtful in that. Uh we want to give people the ability to be able to work in in a circumstance that they feel safe. Uh but we do know that the weather is changing, more people are going to be indoors. And that can present a problem with uh this type of a pandemic. So we'll have to put some kind of a policy. So we expect to do that uh within the next week or so. Uh again, I'm talking with the other municipalities in North Simcoe about their approach as well. Because we're somewhat similar. There are some of the larger municipalities which are tier one and have a different level of service that's that's quite interactive with um. Citizens. Uh they've announced some policies which are are probably appropriate for them. We're not sure if that's exactly what we need to do, but uh. I'm confident we'll have something that will work. Um aside from that, I think I think that's uh most of what we're working on. So I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. I'm glad you touched um very gently on policies. Uh I think what we're talking about here is the uh. HR vaccination mandate policy that, you know, the federal government has adopted, the province has adopted. Countless corporations have adopted, a lot of the world has adopted. The county of Simcoe adopted. The county of Simcoe adopted, Berry adopted, Arilia adopted. So now we have North Simcoe. And this is that contentious policy that depending on how it's applied, could see people who choose to not be vaccinated. Not people who have medical exemptions because you can't discriminate against them, but people who just are hesitant or resistant or whatever you want to call them. They could potentially face termination or redeployment or leaves of absence. All of those kinds of options are available in many of these policies, and it's very contentious and clearly is divided our entire nation right now. But it is the elephant in the room, and I want to, I don't want us to kind of just tippy toe around it. This is something where, you know, I don't have to tell you, we have a legal, let alone a moral obligation to protect our staff and keep in a safe workplace. We also have that obligation to make sure that the residents whom we come in contact with directly or indirectly are also protected and safe in the way we do business. And I'm not talking about vaccinated people getting the plague from unvaccinated people. I'm talking about that tiny minority that either refused to get vaccinated or can't. Who the rest of us who are vaccinated infect and either give them, you know, a late dose of COVID, maybe they get COVID and die. Or maybe they get long COVID and it's the gift that keeps on giving and it becomes a long-term disability issue and lawsuits because we should have kept, protected them, you know, and kept them safe. And who knows where this is going to go. It's going to be an absolute rabbit hole and illegal dumpster fire for decades, I think. But our bottom line is we don't need to ruminate too much on this. We're not reinventing the wheel. These policies are in place all over the place. And I think largely we can, with a tiny bit of cutting and snipping and customizing it, put something in place for our workplace sooner than later. I know we've taken a wait and see approach, but the health unit's pretty clear. I don't want to see wholesale tearing of people's rights and firing staff. I know how sensitive we are to our existing HR churn. But I really would like to see this policy in its draft come before council. This isn't like your garden variety policy that council doesn't get involved in and you guys just do in the HR world, you know? If someone gets an extra sick day or whatever, we're talking about something that is politically huge. And I think our, our people who put us here and voted for us seem to know where we stand on these issues in implementing them. And that's why I'd like to make sure this policy doesn't just happen in the back office and get quietly implemented, that it come before council, even a special meeting to discuss it because it will be debated. I'd like to see that come here. Let's get it implemented sooner than later because we're late to the party in my mind. Those are just my comments on that policy.
Mr. Deno, you care to comment or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I understand the concern. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's going to be as big an issue as, as you're suggesting. You know, I don't, I don't, I have my thoughts on the policy and how, again, my, my intent and certainly my job as C A O is to run an efficient organization that can deliver services and keep our people safe. You know, and we're trying to get a good assessment of, of what the status of our, our workforce is. And how big a problem is it? Isn't quite clear yet, but I think we'll have a good, a good indication of that. So are we dealing with a very small minority of our people? That we need to find out what their, what their status is and how can we potentially accommodate them? You know, it might be a very small issue to deal with. So I'm not in a rush to, to copy someone's policy and create a problem that I may not have. That so, that's the careful consideration that's being, being given. We were waiting for some, for some direction from the health unit, which they gave, and it was a recommendation. They did not mandate it. It was a recommendation that you come forward with this. And that's how we're certainly treating this. And that's why when I talk to Penetang wishing, when I talk to Tay, when I talk to Tiny, we're, we're giving this careful consideration. But our consideration is because we want to keep our people safe, want to keep our people employed. We want to keep the town efficient, you know, and want to be able to deliver services. That's, that's the intent of it. And I think we're going to get to the right place and give it, you know, the careful consideration it needs.
Thank you. Counsel Chesky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the C A O for his common sense approach to this. I disagree with Counsel Gordon that this should be a council debated issue. I think the worst thing we can do is have a Midland COVID strategy and a Penetang wishing COVID strategy and a tiny township COVID strategy. I think it divides our, you know, employees and I think it divides everybody. And I don't think it's the great, the good thing to do. I don't think, I, I agree with the, the C A O in that we don't need to rush into this. I think it's a common sense thing to do right now. And I just appreciate everybody's doing the best they can with what they've got. I think Midland, Penetang, Tay, Tiny situation, solution is probably the best thing for all of us. And I think we just take this as things evolve and we'll see where it goes.
And I will say there is a head of council meeting, sorry, yeah, head of council meeting coming up, and I'll be sure to, to ask the question. I guarantee it'll be part of the agenda. And that's obviously in this day and age, every meeting involves a COVID nineteen conversation. So I'll be sure to, if I do hear or hear anything, I'll be sure, as I'm sure I see you will also. Question?
Yes, it's also, I want to say, thank, thank you for, thank you, Counselor Gordon, for bringing up the elephant in the room. We're all knowing that this needs to be talked about. And, and I, you know, quite frankly, I'm, have gotten to the point of just kind of going, oh, my goodness, please, you know. You know, enough is enough, but that is a sticking my head in the sand approach. So I'm confessing that there are days where I think, can this please just go away? And I know there's a lot of community members who are thinking the same way. So I'm sharing that, that I feel that. And personally, my own daughter, my eleven-year-old child is in isolation. So it's real. She was in close contact. So I know it's real. Doesn't, didn't change my opinion moving forward that that, and it's, and so we're sitting here in Midland Council. She was in close contact, not in Midland. Some of the people don't worry. But it, you know, I, I think it is something it needs extreme care, extreme diligence. They have to be careful to not react. And I appreciate that it is being spoken up as a suggestion. We have a lot of shared services already. So doing this in conjunction with Penetang, Tiny Tay, and Bozalay First Nation is, I believe, the wisest way to move forward. Because we do, as I said before, have services that are shared. Protecting our employees, protecting the people. Yes, we were, we were elected to do that. One of the other ways that we have to protect people is we have to, we have to respect and protect their personal dignity of choice. There is a provision under the Education Act where parents can say for religious or conscientious reasons, they choose not to vaccinate their children. It exists. We have to be mindful that we are not, just as Counselor Warden said, setting ourselves up for potential litigation. Do I believe that there's going to be ramifications ten to fifteen years down the road? Yes, I do. So let's be mindful of this. We don't want people to feel as if they have to disclose private medical information and feel afraid. And then make a decision that is not the best and true to their core because they might be afraid to answer and say, I'm against this and here's my reasons why. And then have to prove or be asked to prove, to say, I have an allergy or say, you know what? These are my reasons. They have the dignity of choice. I know it's a division. I understand it. But at no point can we put ourselves in a position where we are enforcing or be seen to be enforcing something upon people solely so that they can go to work. That scares me. I would really like to see this come back to us. I would really like it to be done carefully. I would really like to see us all being extremely empathetic and sympathetic to all sides because we were elected to represent everybody regardless of our own personal opinions. So there's supposed to be a direct question. Is there any way that we can help you, Mr. C A O, move forward through this process with our neighbors, our friends and our families in an easier manner?
Mr. C A O?
Well, I think, I think you've helped with, with your perspectives that you've provided through, I think numerous council meetings when we've been talking about these types of, these types of issues, you know, and again, you've done it again tonight. I mean, I, I, I say that on behalf of all of council. I think, you know, it's quite clear that, you know, there's concern about the safety of, of individuals and there's concerns about safety of our staff. You know, and there is certainly, you know, differing opinions on, on the enforcement methods. So that is, you know, I think what you've shared is, is, is important, you know, and, and we've heard that. And that's certainly part of what is our consideration in coming up with, would be a procedure or policy. I think the collaboration is very strong, you know, to your point about working with the other in North Simcoe is one of the things that, you know, we've all, I think, benefited from is very strong collaboration across North Simcoe. So that isn't an issue at all. We work literally daily together on exchanging where we are on.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. C A O. Last comment, Counsel Maine?
Yes, well, first of all, I just want to give a huge shout out to Sean Bario. I was an engineering summer student and I once asked him, I said, what do you like about working for the town of Midland? And his response was, every day is different. I always think about that because it's so true. Every day is different. Quick comment, I just wanted to remind everyone, in our traditional land acknowledgement, we talk about the traditional people of the town of Wendat. The Jesuit missionaries, when they came to our, this region in sixteen forties, they brought with them smallpox, measles and influenza. And then within ten years, over fifty percent of the population of the Wendat were decimated by disease. It's over ten thousand Wendat people died. They estimate the population was about twenty to twenty-five thousand, was decimated down to nine. And only five hundred traveled eastward to establish Wendake in Quebec City, while the other group went to settle in the States, which is referred to as Wyon, Wyon Dat in eventually Oklahoma. With that being said, I think it's very important that we get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Maine. Counsel Gordon?
I can just add one thing. I mean, you don't have to look far on your news feed to see how lost Alberta is right now in COVID and how they failed to act and how they used bad judgment and bad decision-making and just opened things up and just even now Kenny's still cowardly hiding, not even leading his province. Alberta is lost in COVID. Their ICUs are spilling over with people dying. In Ontario, we, we're getting off pretty easy right now, but it's coming. So I'm just concerned that as an organization, we take the wait and see and let's make everybody feel better and let's not pick a side and let's not have a debate. Let's do this in the H R committee because I see it on the agenda next week or this week. Rather than come into council, I think the people that put us here deserve to know how we want to fight for their rights and how, what, what we, what position we want to take as employers and what position we want to take as the board for this corporation. And not abdicate that to unelected people to make that decision. That's the easy way out. That's the cowardly way. It needs to come back to this council, in my opinion. I'm not putting a motion on the floor tonight, but you know, I hope the C A O sees this and that it shouldn't be just the H R committee, which is only a couple of counselors involved. It should be coming back here. We can all get our position on the record publicly. So people know where we stand in this pandemic. Whether we're burying our head in the sand, whether we're deferring, whether we're just not wanting to deal with it or just hoping that it blows over and it doesn't happen to, to Midland. That naive approach, you know, clearly from my position, I'm not prepared to put on the record. But I do want to have a fulsome discussion about how we can keep our staff safe, employed, and make sure that we're following the federal government, the provincial government, the county and the major employers in our, in our area and not just, you know, pandering to the fear that we might lose one or two people. So I, that's, just look at Alberta as you're starting to think about what could happen because it's very real and it's coming. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gordon. Mr. C A O, last word, and I'm going to shut the conversation down. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No, I just want to assure everyone that, you know, throughout this pandemic, I think we've done an outstanding job in managing our staff and the safety of the public. And, and you know, we've been able to provide services and do events that other communities haven't because we've been extremely responsible. And we do that because we've got a very strong relationship with the health unit. We've got a very strong relationship with our community and that's certainly through listening through, you know, the counselors. And we have a very strong, you know, control group that includes members of, of this council to help us make those decisions. So if you look at our record through the pandemic, you're going to find a stellar record in keeping, you know, our community and our staff safe. So, you know, I'm certainly committed to continuing to do that. You know, if there's a reason why it needs to come to council, we'll have to consider that. But I don't want people to think that, you know, this particular decision is different from any other decision that has been made through this pandemic. We've been through some very, very difficult situations through this pandemic when those numbers were spiking before there were vaccines available. You know, and we kept our people and our residents safe. So while I appreciate, you know, people want to engage in a debate on vaccination policy, I want to keep the town running. And I want to keep our people safe and our employees safe. And we've demonstrated we may be able to do that.
And thank you. And please continue to do exactly that. Thank you. We'll move on to notice the motion. Any councilor have a notice of motion bring forward for this evening? I see none. Announcements, general announcements, any announcements by council this evening? Counsel Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. I have a few. Bear with me. First of all, smile cookies. I was at Gerard Lashapelle and family's golf tournament this weekend and noted that smile cookies are on sale all week at Tim Hortons and they are going to support hospice. So go buy a smile and make a smile. Secondly, it's come to my attention that I'm really out of shape and I want to assure people that I will not set the speed limit on any bike trails in town just to make me look like I'm in better shape. So while ten K sounds very reasonable to me, the staff will look and see and probably find that ten K is painfully slow on most of our in-town trails. So yes, so that's very upfront. That's just my speed and that's not me going my fastest, but it might be close. September is thirty days of culture. And don't forget to do something each day to enjoy the culture, whether you're Googling it or you can get outside and do it while staying safe. There are so many ways to explore our culture. You can jump over to the Cultural Alliance Facebook page and find some ideas, including what I refer to as geo-couaching, which is our scavenger hunt. And again, thanks so much to John Todd for putting these clues together. I solved one of them. Yes, I'm not going to tell you which one it was. But I solved one and there are thirty of them. It is a lot of fun that you can do online, share with others and really enjoy that cultural asset map. Next, age friendliness. Each of our municipalities either already has or is in progress of putting together an age-friendly report and plan. We passed our plan a few months back. And I wanted to let people know who are watching this as well as our council. Midland Seniors Council has reached out to Chigamack and through them to the North Simcoe, Ontario Health Team, whose mandate is to create seniors-friendly North Simcoe. We have an event that we are hosting for all of the municipalities and other stakeholders in seniors and age friendliness in North Simcoe to explore the possibility of North Simcoe collaboration on age friendly and fingers crossed funding for an age-friendly coordinator. So we'll be exploring that, asking some questions, seeing if there's an appetite for it, and then looking to create a working group that would create a presentation for each of our councils. That is coming up on October fourteenth. It's a two and a half hour meeting, not too long. Great speaker, Lisa Brancaccio, who has a ton of experience in age friendliness, and she's also bringing her own speaker who has experience in the Niagara region, setting up a collaborative, age-friendly result of this type. Two other things, if Deputy Mayor doesn't mind me talking about some things at county this week. The moss formerly known as the gypsy moss that we have been inundated this year, county has come back with some reports. They've done some counts on eggs and what they have found is that next year will be much better. There's already a massive drop off. We're expecting mild in our region, up to moderate in some regions of Simcoe County. So we will not be seeing county spraying the So we will not be seeing county spraying the region next year because we don't expect a ton of gypsy moss. Um, if you have been complaining about garbage bins, this is another county matter, size of garbage bins. County is listening, your mayors and your deputy mayors are listening. Keep talking to them because there is a workshop coming up in a couple of weeks that county is doing for uh, county counselors in which they are getting feedback. Will this turn on a dime and get you a smaller bin right away? No. Um, manufacturing this bins, these bins is a massive production. Uh, the manufacturer who is producing our current bins is already behind. But it will get us understanding what is needed and getting orders in for smaller bins, versatile bins and other ways of being versatile. For people who just think the bins are going to be too heavy and clunky, Stephen Walma, Deputy Mayor of Tiny Township, has a video on his Facebook page of his five-year-old wheeling a bin filled with weights to the curb by himself. So you can get a sense of how they are to move around. But if that's not your concern, it's where the heck am I going to store them and how am I going to get them up the stairs, down the stairs, across the snow and out? Then there, your mayor and your deputy mayor will be invited to the workshop by county. You're welcome, Deputy Mayor Ross. And all the concerns that you can think of have been recorded. They are truly, truly listening and looking to make the best solution possible. Also being inspired, of course, by other municipalities who have implemented this very successfully, even though they may have trailer parks and condo developments and so on in their region. And that, I think, is all of my updates and announcements for this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. I just wanted to chime in on that ten kilometer speed thing too, because, you know, I'd committed to Counselor Cunningham that, hey, I support that. I mean, that night I did too, but I've since been contacted and uh, tried it out and actually put air in my tires and my bike. Counselor Maine, you're going to appreciate that. Yeah, it was pretty dusty. But uh, yeah, I got on her and I tried to put my phone out, put the speed measurement and I tried to do ten kilometers an hour. And I know what that feels like in a channel speed when I'm in my jet boat. And it's like, oh my God, I get out and swim faster, but it was even worse on a bicycle. So, I mean, I almost fell over. I was barely had enough momentum to keep my three hundred pounds from just going. So I think ten kilometer might be a, a little slow. We may want to consider that for some of the curves, you know, and some of the narrow spots that definitely exist over along the Tiffin part of the trail there. Uh, slow people down. So you're not whipping around the corner, but for the trail in general, I think a ten click speed, speed limit is a, a little aggressive. So anyway, we'll, uh, we'll wait and see what staff suggests there. I'm sure they, they've got more wisdom than, than us. We sit around and dream this stuff up and they have to do it. Another quick announcement, uh, actually I wanted to shout out to the C A O because he's wearing the shirt. That's the subject of the announcement. So I, I'm going to actually not steal his thunder and let him uh, uh, roll with it or walk with it or, or run with it.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Any other announcements? Counselor Maine?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Gordon was alluding to uh, the Terry Fox shirt that Mr. Dino is rocking. That's a nice one from a couple of years ago. This year's is a really nice uh, blue. It has some matey design. I didn't realize this, but Terry Fox had meaty heritage. Uh, so that's this Sunday and Monday was awesome. We did a flag raising. Uh, so Don Chapman and the awesome local Terry Fox crew was there. And the mayor even proclaimed Monday was Terry Fox Day in the town of Midland. So uh, support Terry Fox. It's a great charity. And, and there's also the Cancer Sports Center, uh, which if you want to give your funds directly to a local organization that deals with cancer. And I just want to say thank you, uh, for the people who came out last Wednesday, pardon me, last Friday, which we got rained out for the downtown movie. We have one more next Wednesday and if it rains, we'll do it on the Friday. And that's uh, the epic Chronicles of Narnia, The Witch and the Wardrobe. I think there's another thing in there. Uh, but it's a fun, it's a long-running movie, but so uh, we saved it to the end uh, so that the movie will start nice and early as it's getting quite dark earlier. So hope you see it down there and if not, uh, we'll see you around. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maine. Any other uh, announcements this evening? I see none. We'll move on to the next uh, move by Counselor Maine, second by Counsel Gordon, that the committee of, of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? So carried. Thank you very much. Next up, we have move by Counsel Cunningham, second by Counsel Post, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? So carried. Thank you. Uh, move by Council McGinn, second by Counsel Chesky, a bylaw two thousand twenty-one dash forty-one being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand four dash ninety as amended for the removal of the holding H symbol at eight sixty Young Street be passed and enacted. Any questions or comments with regards to this, Counselor Maine?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, we're hearing lots of rumblings that this is the phase two of the Shelter Now project. Um, will this site plan be coming for, to council for approval or is this, once we lift the holding, uh, is development to proceed? Thank you.
Already going. Mr. Farr, care to answer?
Uh, through you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Counselor Maine. Uh, the, this is a file that the staff has delegated authority to issue site plan approval for. So with the lifting of the H, uh, that'll allow the issuance of the building permit, uh, once that's been cleared and approved.
Oh, Counselor Maine, you're fine?
Well, well, um, if they have delegated site plan approval, we just cross our fingers and hope that it's an awesome site. So thank you for that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor Maine. All those in favor? So carried. Thank you. We're moving along quite well. A move by Council McGinn, second by Counsel Maine, a bylaw two thousand twenty-one dash forty-one being bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting held September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one be passed and enacted. All those in favor? And everyone's favorite bylaw, moved by Counsel Gordon, second by Counsel Cunningham, at the regular meeting of council adjourned at nine thirty-seven. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? Just kidding. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your patience with me uh, tonight and uh, have a great night. Go Bills.
You did very well, Deputy Mayor.